I think that works. Anything that works for you will work for us.
Well, I guess that doesn't address what I was asking about.
That's why I'm just giving you an idea and let's roll with it.
And I don't know, I mean, I thought you were going, this was talking about a committee consisting of members of the authority.
Yeah.
If you say that the chairman is going to ask for volunteers, it seems like anybody out there could volunteer. So you need to be more specific than just asking for volunteers.
Members of the authority?
Assign members. It says members, so it's members of the authority.
Two committees on a volunteer basis for the purpose of, or in better words...
I mean...
No, I'm, I...
I'm having a problem with this volunteer thing.
Okay.
If nobody, the chairman usually has the ability to appoint a committee. What I'm trying to find out is, do you, does the chairman appoint a chairman of the committee?
Well, then we should write that.
And, and committee members, or will the committee select its own chairman? Once it's appointed?
How does it go?
Well, it's done both ways in different bodies. I was just trying to find out how this body did it, but apparently it hasn't.
That's why I'm trying to ask the director.
The way, the way that the advisory commission did it was basically, we're going to, the gentleman said, "I'm going to utilize my power as a chair to create a subcommittee. Who wants to be in that subcommittee? Who of you who volunteered to be in that subcommittee wants to be the chair?" That's how he did it.
Okay, so he, but he basically appointed it all right there.
Yes.
So the chairman appointed the chairman of the committee. The chairman of the board appointed the chairman of the committee.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, so should we amend the second-to-last sentence? Each committee will be headed by a committee chairman appointed by the chairman of the board?
Ooh, that sounds big, doesn't it? Chairman of the commission.
Chairman, chairman of the commission.
I like chairman of the board.
Okay.
Right at the discretion of the chairman of the commission?
Pointed by the...
In our case, it's the authority.
The authority, yeah, the authority, the authority.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm on too many boards, commissions, and authorities.
All right, so it'll read, "Each committee will be headed by a committee chairman appointed by the chairman of the authority."
Yes. I think that, I think that makes it...
All right, winner. Okay. Whew. Moving on to meeting.
Okay, so the, the change on eight, it's about the, the quorum, and it's got one city member, one county member, and one public member, and the one was crossed out and "the" was put in. But by they, when they put "the," that means it's the primary member, the primary member versus either one of the members. And if you're trying to get a quorum, it's gotta be one and not the.
Good catch.
Well, but when the primary member isn't here, the alternate sits in and becomes the voting member.
Exactly.
And then that person is the public member.
No, the, there's a public member and an alternate. And when it says "the public member," there's only one person. But if it's one public member, then the quorum could be either.
So in order to put this in plain English, should we just simply add "or their alternate"?
Or put the one back in, which was crossed out. Whichever way you want to go, it doesn't matter.
County council?
I mean...
I'm just asking because they're, they wordsmith things all the time. Thank you. It's 5C5.
Yeah, when the alternate sits in, the alternate is acting as the...
Can you say it a little bit louder? Your microphone's...
When the alternate sits in, and that's not just for the public member, but it's for anybody, the alternate acts as the public member.
I don't disagree with you at all, except you've got one county, one city, and "the" public member. And "the" public member is me. And if I'm not here, and therefore they couldn't have a quorum unless it was one public member, in which case it could be either me or Mike.
No, the, as the Article IV states, "The membership consists of," and it says what it says, I don't need to read it, but then it says "the public member," or "a public And so then it talks about alternates, and alternates can be seated for any of the other principal seats, but the, the membership of the authority remains the same.
And the alternate member changes to the public member if the public member is not here?
Right.
As with any alternate.
There you go.
If any of the primary seats is vacant, the alternate sits in that seat.
Mike? Did you have a question?
I think, I think that the sentence in Article IV, "Any such designated alternate or alternates may be a voting participant at an authority meeting at such time as a regular member..."
Noting attendance.
Yeah.
Correct. Right.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that.
All right. There, are there any other questions to the amendments? The question I have is, on these speaker cards, are they only for Camarillo's or Oxnard's or both? I just wanted to make sure. Both? Okay, because we have four cards here. So we'll wait till we get to the second ones, and then we'll hear the public comment, if that's okay? All right.
Why don't you ask if there's anybody specific to Camarillo?
That's what I just did, I thought. Is there anyone specific that needs to talk about the Camarillo bylaws? Yes? Okay, Mark, please come up.
Camarillo together, it'd be comments applicable.
Okay, thank you. Three minutes.
The point that I made, where I said we were concerned about the authority giving up its jurisdiction, very simply is as follows. If you look at the JPA, the JPA very broadly grants, in paragraph three, broadly grants authority from the supervisors to this committee to, for all matters brought before it pertaining to development, operation, or any other matter at the Camarillo Airport. Similar language appears in the Oxnard JPA. So it's an extremely broad grant of authority. Then we look at the proposed bylaws, and what we're very, very concerned about, I say "we," it's the, the hangar owners that I represent are most concerned about, is that in purpose, in both Oxnard and in Camarillo, the specific language that says that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors shall not give approval on matters relating to this, that, and the other thing, all of the things covered within that general grant of authority, unless they have first gotten a recommendation from the aviation authority. That's stricken, okay? That's stricken, but then you go to the next paragraph, and this is where what really gives us a problem. In the next paragraph, it says that "The authority shall consider and recommend to the council and board standards for airport operations, operation standards, and standards relating to development of areas adjacent to the Oxnard Airport, development standards." And then those are defined, and those are defined very narrowly. And it goes, "Except as allowed by the Joint Powers Agreement, for, for any matter related to these standards is submitted to the council or board, the authority shall review and make recommendations." The long and short of that is that if something is not within the area of these two definitions, it's not within your jurisdiction. So a significant part of your jurisdiction appears to have been just given up.
Excuse me, can you tell us where you are? Because I'm under purpose, and I don't see the word "standards" anyplace in there, and I'm just looking at the wrong place, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was reading Oxnard's.
You've just lost me.
I was reading the Oxnard's.
That's fine. Keep going.
Okay. Want me to switch to Camarillo's? I'm sorry, I forgot it was on Camarillo. The Camarillo ones say similarly, "The authority shall not take any action not expressly authorized by the JPA." Well, there are very few things that are expressly authorized, there's a general grant of authority, but very few things, mainly zoning and noise and things of that nature, that are expressly authorized. "The authority shall not make any recommendation that the city or the county exercise any power not held in common by both the city and the county." We've had a huge discussion here about hangars, hangar leases, et cetera. Certainly, those are not matters that are in common between the city and the county. Under these bylaws, you have no jurisdiction over them. We're very concerned that you've given up, you've given up your right to make any recommendation, and you're our only way of doing it. Finally, it's very incongruous that if you go further on, there's an inserted that everybody will be bound by Government Code 1090, which we discussed earlier.
Thank you.
But not the other statute. If the other statute's so important, both should be mentioned, or neither mentioned.
Thank you. County council, could you address the item on purpose, Article II, and what he was talking about, and then also in Article III?
Yes. Sorry. It sounded as though Mr. Sullivan was referring to the version that was addressed at the special meeting of these bodies, and not the version that's before us now. In any event, the issue regarding what actions this authority can take in this second paragraph in Article III, where it starts, "The authority shall not take any action unless that action is expressly authorized by the Joint Powers Agreement." That's, that's the sum and substance of what these bodies can do. In other words, the Joint Powers Agreement is an agreement between two public entities. They've allowed, they've agreed that we would, that each of those entities would act through this body. This body doesn't have any power to do anything beyond what they've been expressly authorized to do in the Joint Powers Agreement. The second part of that same paragraph addresses a similar issue, which is that because this is a joint powers agreement, these authorities cannot take any action except for actions that both the county and the city have in common. And that's the essence of what a joint powers authority or joint powers agreement is. A city and a county are allowed to enter in an agreement to jointly exercise a power that each of them has. And so if, if, if this body tries to exercise a power that the county has, but the city does not, that violates the, both the joint powers agreement and the statute that governs joint powers agreement.
So common would be hangars.
One easy example, and it was addressed in the other memo that we talked about earlier, is leases. The county of Ventura is the only body that has the authority to lease county property. Neither city has the authority to lease county property. And so neither, neither the city of Camarillo nor the city of Oxnard can take actions with regard to leases. So that's not a power that's held in common by both the city and the county.
But we would still be able to hear it and to provide guidance?
No.
No.
No. These bodies lack the authority to exercise powers over leases, because it's only the county that has the power to enter into and terminate, et cetera, leases.
So then, then everything then would end up having to go directly to the Board of Supervisors, which doesn't sound like how I'd like to be.
But that's, we're only recommending, I'm sorry.
Right, so no, he's saying it wouldn't even come here to be recommended. So he's, he's stating that a lease agreement would not come through this authority to be reviewed before it went to the Board of Supervisors. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and how does this authorities, this is a new change, this is new language that's going in here that we haven't had before?
Well, it's, it's something that was true as a matter of law, and so it's simply being stated in here so that it's clear to the members of, of these authorities, as somebody said earlier, people who are not us, who are sitting in these chairs in the future, will understand the limitations.
Questions?
I, I personally think that's sort of bad policy to...
I would agree.
Force it, force it straight to the supervisors when they have a couple of entities that could act as a buffer.
Well, and then questions also, what is the authority for?
Well, the authority wasn't set up to do leases. The authority was set up before they leased those things.
Go ahead.
As a matter of fact, I, I still get along with Mr. Tom Bulk, the first properties administrator, and I've talked to him about the history of the Camarillo Advisory Commission and, and the, well, the Aviation Advisory Commission and the airport authorities. And what he related to me basically is the fact that the Airport Advisory Commission is the one that is supposedly providing the technical knowledge and expertise to the Board of Supervisors, and they report to the Board of Supervisors. And what he told me is that the airport authorities came after the fact, and this was a history lesson for me. And it was an attempt from the county and the cities to work together and basically control and help with the development of the airports. So because at that time, the, the airports were seen as, you know, they were providing noise to the communities, and at the same time, the, the county wanted to make sure that development next to the airports was going to be compatible with the airports. So it was mostly about compatibility, it was mostly about the development around the airports, and at some point, I guess, it transcribed into everything else that the authority does today. But it's, you know, we, we talked about the first item, about the four-fifths vote. That's something that is in the JPA, and I think that was a compromise back in the day between the county and the airports, but I don't know how enforceable that was legally. And in talking to county council, that, they basically said that that's not enforceable, even when you, when you vote on something and you go to the Board of Supervisors, that the Board of Supervisors can vote opposite and override it.
Bill?
Paragraph four on the JPA, Camarillo and Ventura County. "Supervisors in the council shall not grant any approval or take any action in respect to any land use matter within the Camarillo Airport zone until the matter has been first submitted to the authority and a recommendation received there from." "Any land use matter within the Camarillo Airport zone shall mean actions relating to zoning, master or general planning, use permits, and other exercise of police power which regulate the development of the area shown in Exhibit A."
That's the first purpose, first, first paragraph under purpose.
Right. So I, I can't see how hangar leases on, in the airport zone is not, is not something that we care about. I, that, I'm just reading what's there.
Well, let me ask a question.
Mike had one first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Do, do we look at the, you know, it's been 15 years since I've been on here, so help me with my memory. We only are on the airport part, not the rest of the land that the county owns, that the city calls the airport, is that right?
No.
No, we, we...
We look at everything.
We govern over that as well.
Wait.
So...
Okay. Well, go ahead.
I wanted to mention also, there is a 1985-96 agreement, I believe, for development at the airport, and that agreement says basically, well, it defines the different areas for Camarillo. Anything inside of the airport fence for aeronautical development, for anything actually inside of the fence, goes through county planning for approvals. Now, the agreement also says that anything in the airport business park, anything outside of the fence, that the airport, that the county is developing for county purposes, for public services, it would still go through county planning, but anything that the airport is looking to develop in the business park, that is for private use, that it will actually go for to-city planning for development. So, I mean, there's been those agreements back and forth.
I, I understood that, but, so my question should have been, within the airport fence we look at, do we also look at development in the business park?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So the county owns buildings, and some of it they lease. Do we look at those leases?
Yes.
You do. Anything, so the Department of the Airport is granted the authority by the Board of Supervisors, the director, to exercise leases, to execute leases that are up to five years. Anything longer than five years comes through this, we would typically have brought it through the Airport Advisory Commission, Airport Authority, and then to the Board of Supervisors, and that's how we get them approved.
So county council's talking, but my question to him was going to be, why is it that some leases would come through here and not others? He just said that the leases on the business park side come to this authority.
What, well, the practice has been, any leases longer than five years, they go through the advisory commission and the airport authority, and then to the Board of Supervisors. That's the practice. Now, we're talking about the legality of how that is and if it should happen, and Mr. Temple is saying that it probably shouldn't be that way, and that's what we're here to discuss, so...
But you've also been, we just talked about the JPA, and in those, that JPA, it states that we are talking about land uses, and a lease is a land use, am I correct?
No, I don't understand land use to encompass actually the, the individual leases that gets...
What's your definition of land use, then?
Land use refers to, generally speaking, refers to designations as to how land gets used, like zoning, for example. The zoning laws are designating various allowable uses for land.
Okay, and then explain why we all appreciate and think it's correct that we're looking at the leases at the business park?
I don't know why that has been the practice. I can simply say that what the Joint Powers Act, the Joint Exercise of Powers Act says with regard to, each entity must have a power in common before it can be exercised by the Joint Powers Authority.
Did you have any other questions before I asked mine? Go ahead, Mike.
Well, and what I'm reading in this, "The authority should not play, take any action, et cetera, et cetera," is an attempt to clarify what we could legally and not legally do. Is that correct, sir?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Okay, so my, my...
Go ahead.
Let me finish. So my understanding is that leases are brought before or spoken about or discussed in front of this body, but we have no authority to execute a lease or deny a lease. We can make recommendations, but that's all. Is that appropriate?
No, not according to...
That's what we've been doing in the past, so I'm asking the question.
Let me, it's, I think, okay, I'm turning, I think the, it's kind of complicated, and so I, I think maybe we need to look at this a little more and come back and with, with clearer guidance. And I think underlying it really is, when is that four-fifths vote requirement a legal requirement? Because if it's a core joint powers exercise, then maybe the four-fifths override by the Board of Supervisors would be required. But just a, a pure advisory matter that's not a, not a shared joint power, I'm, I don't think that four-fifths vote requirement is enforceable as to that. So in other words, you could bring anything you want to the body and ask for advice, recommendation, whether it's policy, whether it's a, a small lease, a big lease. I mean, I think the idea was basic, you know, major policy determinations like zoning and not individual parcels. But suppose you wanted to weigh in and give a recommendation on an, how an individual parcel should be treated? I, I think that would not be the core shared power, and I don't think the board would be bound to the four-fifths vote criteria. I think the board could go forward on a three-fifths vote, on something like that, versus where is it, it's, it's maybe a land use zoning sort of issue that is meant a shared power, that might be subject to the four-fifths vote. So I think we're kind of tiptoeing around that a little bit here, because I don't want to say that, that the commission, you know, these authorities shouldn't and can't weigh in and give a recommendation. The core issue is going to be, is that four-fifths vote apply to that recommendation?
Is it enforceable or not?
Right. And so it will be on some things and not others. You know? I think that's why we're having a little trouble articulating where that line is.
And, and we need to be precise about that, because why is this board here if those type of items aren't coming to us? So if we, if we say, you know, we just, the county decides to update leases, that's a great example, update leases, and it doesn't get checked by the commission or the authority, and it just goes to the Board of Supervisors, I personally would appreciate having some eyes on it to weigh in and to make sure that we're getting public comment. I would think supervisors, or goes you would as well.
And we, I think we need clear direction on this whole thing.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a very valuable service.
That's what we're here for.
And the question is, is it, is it just a recommendation, or is it really a four-fifths override scenario? That's the rub.
Right, but we need to make sure it's clear.
I mean, it serves a, a great purpose, just as a recommending body.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think any one of us wants to get involved in single lease issues, but we're talking about classes here, and classes of leases, and some higher overarching concepts that we need to make sure that we maintain some leverage on.
Okay. So on, on that part, we would have to come back, and we couldn't make the language changes as of right now.
Yeah, I, I would request you give us a chance to do that.
Okay. No, hey, I, you know me, I appreciate that. Taking the time to do it right is really important. Okay. Were there any other questions on this, these items? The other speaker cards, I understand, are for both, so I'm going to move it on to Oxnard for...
Mine was on Justice.
Oh, great, Scott, come on up. Three minutes. Thank you for clarification.
And I promise I'll take less than three minutes, supervisor. I appreciate the, the discussion of paragraph four of the JPA, but I'd like to call everyone's attention to paragraph three, and I'll read it. "The Ventura County Board of Supervisors shall not give formal approval or otherwise act upon any matter brought before it pertaining to the development, operation, or any other matter at Camarillo Airport until the matter shall have first been submitted to the authority and a recommendation received there from." It's plain English. That's what this authority is for. I don't understand what, maybe I'm just being a simple country lawyer, but I don't understand what all this discussion is about, when the JPA echoes exactly what you just said, supervisor, about why are we here? So it sure seems to me like the JPA answers that question. And I have two minutes and nine seconds left, and I'm going to give them to Mark Sullivan.
And I'm just gonna take a 30 minutes, 30 seconds.
Promises.
We'll see.
And I, I submit...
Two minutes, keep going.
I submit there's a, a good reason why the JPA was written that broadly. We're not prepared to present it to everybody here, but if you were to look at the grant assurances, the deed of the Army, Oxnard Army Air Force Base to Camarillo, it wasn't just a gift, it has about 25 pages of very specific commitments where the county would be legally liable for violating them, substantial liabilities under the old Civil Aviation Act of 1939, I think it was the governing authority then. But in any event, there were substantial liabilities, so obviously, the Board of Supervisors would want to have had an input and control over anything that could have invoked liability under those grant assurances, which by the way, include very specifically assurances of nondiscrimination against different classes of aviation users, which specifically provide that there will be a hangar space provided, or that a ability to build hangars will be provided. So all these sort of mundane items, the bylaw rewrite tries to narrow you, narrow you basically to being a zoning appeals board. And I submit, you're not under the JPA, and you certainly wouldn't want to be under the obligations imposed on you by the grant assurance, and then subsequently by later federal law that adopts that, just as general federal law. But in addition, you have it actually under a direct grant covenants, putting this obligation on the supervisors with big liability. Thank you.
Thank you, with 30 seconds to go. All right, moving on to Oxnard.
Section eight, it's crossed out.
I'd rather hear from the speakers first.
All right.
We're quick and efficient.
Let's go with this...
We had a lot of discussion.
No comment. Okay, Gene Barlow?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Gene Barlow, I'm with the Hangar Owners Association, and at the, at the last meeting of the Airport Advisory Commission, there was also a dialogue with respect to the bylaws. And during that, that conversation, and it was a very interesting conversation, one of the, one of the commissioners made the point that when an individual is standing where I'm standing and making a contribution on an item that is not an agenda item, that there's angst on both sides of the podium. There's angst on your side because your hands are tied. You are not allowed to, to comment on what this person has said because of the Brown Act. And on this side, it's very easy to, for someone who isn't aware of those restrictions that you're under, to think... you're under to think that, okay, your time's up, who's next? That there really isn't an interest in what is being said. Well, I know you have to listen to a lot of screwballs from time to time, but once in a while, you'll get a speaker or a group of speakers that bring before you an issue of weight, an issue that is worthy of further discussion. And since we're talking about bylaws, I'd like, I don't know if it's appropriate to put it in the bylaws or what, but I think that you should have some kind of a policy or rule where one or two, no, two, maybe three of your members can say, "We can't discuss that tonight because it wasn't on the agenda, but I'd like to propose that we put it on the agenda for the next meeting." And this gives you the opportunity, on those rare occasions when you think that the speaker has something worthy of contributing and needs further conversation, that you can officially put it on the agenda at that time for the next meeting. Just a suggestion, I don't know if it's appropriate to put it in the bylaws or make a policy, but consider the...
That's correct, you know, we, any council member or Board of Supervisors can then put that call for that to be agendaised.
Or the public member.
Or a public member.
But a combination, I think two.
We're interacting with the...
Well, that's right.
Thank you for your comments. County Council, just a quick question, we can do that at any time, is to address an agenda, or agendaized as an item for the future?
You can do that at any time.
That's right.
Under the Brown Act, it doesn't have to be in the bylaws.
That's correct.
It wouldn't hurt, but it doesn't have to be in the bylaws.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Multiple times.
Thank you, multiple times. David Tims, please, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. Sort of a follow-up on that same subject. We've kind of concluded that if it's not on the agenda, then it cannot be decided and made a recommendation by the board. And actually, in the agenda, on the proposed bylaws, it says, "The authority shall give fair, open-minded consideration to public comment and make its deliberation and disposition public to matters on the agenda." So then how does somebody that wants to speak on something that they want to be decided by the authority get it on the agenda? I would ask that there be a line in the, in the bylaws saying, "Matters not on the agenda, the chair may have placed on the agenda at a subsequent meeting." And I think that's reasonable. Otherwise, what access would we have? Also, anyone seeking to speak on an actual item that's not on the agenda may have it put on the agenda up to 72 hours prior to the meeting. Otherwise, you'd be waiting for another month to have an item that should be urgent and make a recommendation by the authority delayed for a month. I think that'd be helpful to be in the bylaws to give somebody speaking for public comment to get it on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I think there's some confusion between policies and bylaws. These are our governing things, and I think that our policies cover other types of things. And I think some of the suggestions we've had, maybe it would be better to be policies if they're already not.
Very good point.
Yep.
Thank you. Last speaker is Kenneth Moore.
Look, can we get a clarification by the council? How are the agendas set up? Who puts the agenda together? The chairman and the general manager, or, and I'm coming from my city, how is it done here?
Mr. Rubio, you want to tell them how it's done?
The way that typically has occurred in the past is, well, for the Advisory Commission and for the airport authorities, the administrative secretary, which in this case is the Director of Airports, tries to put the agenda together. We try to get that consent from the chairs on what's going to go on it, so we talk ahead of time. And basically, if the Department of Airport is not going to have a meeting, the chair needs to authorize that that meeting does not occur that month. But it's basically a working relationship between, should be a working relationship between the administrator and the chair of that authority. That's how it's supposed to work.
And so we have also in meetings, agendaized items for the future meetings.
Correct.
In which you put them on the agenda.
Correct. And when situations are unclear, for example, with the issue, with the litigation, I can't talk too much about it, but with the litigation, they wanted to do the appeals process through the airport authority, and staff was unsure if we would be able to do that based on the authorities of the authority. So we had a conversation offline about it, and if we were able to put it in, great, but if we were not able to put it in, you wouldn't make it into the next month's agenda. So we have that discretion of, to talk about it and figure out if we can do it or not. And we typically do that with the help of County Council.
So that's a dialogue between the chair of this organization and the airport advisory and the management of the airport authority on the agenda.
That's how it's supposed to go.
Airport authority, airport manager, and if County Council is needed, we double-check with County Council.
Thank you.
My apologies, Keith, for making you stand that long.
Keith Moore's name, and I thank you for the opportunity to visit today and listen in on your program. I see you're getting your arms around and under the subjects. As I observe that the proposed bylaws are changing the governance of the Ventura County airports, and my question or concern is the possibility of limiting the input, voice, and guidance for the aviation community for the Ventura County Airport operations. I live down at the Channel Islands Harbor, and I observed a similar situation at that harbor, which is organized somewhat same as the Ventura County airports. What we are seeing as a citizen, the harbor no longer have any representation, voice, or input into the direction or development of the harbor activity, and there's a great deal of significant development programs going there. That is already in play. We no longer have our representation, we no longer have a voice. I see the same thing that may happen with this proposed program. And with the loss of public representation, I just don't trust the situation, and I think trust is a very important part of your program. I understand you're getting your arms around this. I want to request that you maintain public representation in your program. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming. Okay, are there any other speakers? All right, so I'm for Camrio only, looking for a motion to come back, or do we need to have a motion? We're not taking any action on it?
You probably don't need a motion.
Okay, so...
The administrative secretary will agendaize it for the next meeting.
We'll bring it back.
Okay, and if you could include the modifications in which we deliberated quite a long time, add those also, so we don't have to do it again, I'd appreciate that. Oxnard?
Yes. On this one, you said at the next meeting, the next meeting is a special meeting? Did you mean the next regular meeting?
Next regular meeting.
Next regular meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarification.
So I just want to, I did not make the Monday, I think it was the fourth, is that what it was, February 4th? It was a special meeting, and I was out of town, so, and I would have been, you know, even much more up on this had I attended that meeting and heard the comments, but one of the things I'm hearing consistently is definitely, you know, there's conflict, there's frustration, and, you know, the bottom line is, is that any member of the public, whether they're involved in the aviation community or not, has a right to come up and address this board. But I think it's another issue about how does the authority respond, and what is the authority of the authority? And it's an advisory board, and I think what's important is, I keep hearing the word "trust" brought up, and I just want to stress that there are going to be disagreements, and sometimes people have to agree to disagree, that's the way I look at it. But I would just encourage the staff, because I've seen this, there's, you know, every, any time before we have, there's a rent increase, you know, this tension starts building, and there's a feeling that the public really has no right to redress their grievances. That's really what I hear here. It's almost like a constitutional issue that the public is very frustrated. And here's one of the ironies, is that the previous speaker mentioned, and I won't even get into it because it would be a violation of the Brown Act, talking about something that's not germane to this airport authority, but the fact of the matter is, is that the reason why this authority was created is to act as an advisory body to the Board of Supervisors to try to, you know, get that input. And so I would just, you know, stress, I did not attend the meeting on the fourth, but I would just stress the fact that we have to be even more conscious and diligent, that everybody here is a public servant, some are volunteers, but we're still public servants, and we're here to serve the public, and we're here to do the very best job we can. And sometimes, what's really hard, and I know this as a former high school teacher, it doesn't matter how many parent conferences you have, you are not going to get to a resolution. And I think anyone who's a parent in this room understands what I'm talking about. And so I just want to encourage the authority and as well as the staff to, that we need to do, obviously, even a better job at trying to make a connection with what seems to be a very chronic issue. It's been chronic, and I'm not putting down the authority, I mean, the staff, I'm just saying that this is not an uncommon thing. So I would like maybe more efforts to build trust.
Thank you, Mr. Zaragoza.
Yeah, Madam Chair, you know, I can understand the frustration from our aviation folks here that are here today, especially the lessees, and, but I think what staff is trying to do, and maybe Rubio and the council can, and the board can correct me, what we're trying to do is correct a process that's been happening for years and years and years on leases, you know, whether it's a month-to-month, whether it's a lease and so forth. And I think we're trying to correct things that have been happening for years and years and years. And as a result of that, I think that the lessees, you know, believe that they're being picked on, but I don't think that's the case, and I think it's a matter of trying to correct things that have been happening for a long time. And unfortunately, the current staff is the ones getting blamed for being, you know, the mean people or so forth that are trying to correct the problem that's been happening for years. But I think with patience and working together, I think that we can resolve this issue, and the input from the aviation users is extremely important to me and I think to staff too. But I think, am I correct, that we're trying to correct things that have been happening for years and years and years, and unfortunately, we've reached that point where current staff and this authority are, have, you know, to correct this item?
Supervisor Zaragoza, I appreciate the words that you just said, because it can be confusing for the tenants. As the airport operator and as somebody who has studied in airport operations, and at one time, I didn't get my license, but I was a student pilot, I love aviation, I can tell you that we like our tenants, we like having our tenants onsite, we like the relationship that we have with our tenants, and we want that relationship back. I can tell you that staff has made several efforts to try to, currently, identifying situations that have occurred and taken place for a long time, which probably didn't need to start, but it is our duty as staff members to maintain that relationship, to find a balance where the tenants don't feel that, you know, that staff is mistreating them, we're trying to help everybody out, we're trying to help them out, we're trying to help the county out. We have to, as administrators of the airport, we have to protect a public asset, and it's important for tenants to understand where we're coming from, too. We understand that it is their livelihoods that they're worried about, we understand the passion, the sentiment that they have, they're pilots, I mean, you talk to a pilot, they're in love with their airplane, they're in love with their hangars, and we just have to try to make sure that we take everything into consideration when we're making decisions. And sometimes, you know, our decisions are not what they may want to hear, but in the end, we're trying to do what is right for everybody, and that would be good for the tenants to understand. And what I can tell you is, for example, when we have litigation items, stuff like that, we do provide, before we get to that point, we do provide tenants with multiple opportunities, I mean, to correct them. Some tenants may disagree, some tenants have getting extensions, you know, 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, sometimes six months, sometimes longer. But in the end, the Department of Airport tries to work with the tenants, and it's only when it gets to a point where the Department of Airport doesn't find a resolution that we'll take action. So anyway, we appreciate our tenants, and we're just trying to make it right, and I appreciate your words because they're the truth.
And I respect the tenants, I think it's extremely important, and our, you know, our position, too, is we need to look at the constituency and the taxpayers of Ventura County. But you have rights, and I think it's important that we work with it and balance things out.
Well, and I have to say, thank you to everyone here, sitting here, for saying that we need to review these bylaws. It's important that we know what the rules and regulations are and what our job is here as the authority. It's very hard to be communicating with the community when us as a board are not understanding all the rules and regulations. And as we had this discussion just earlier, it's still needing to have some clarity, and that might be a change from different people coming onboard. We, too, are a new board and having to figure this out, too. So I appreciate the time and effort and due diligence. I know this is repetitive to have to talk about this, but we do appreciate and value our Camrio and our Oxnard airports and all the staff and council. This is a long time of effort that we're putting in, and we do listen, because we want the trust to be able to make sure that everyone is working in the same direction and that it is effective and efficient. You don't have to sit here every Thursday night, because I know you have other things you would rather be doing. But we value your comments, and we want to listen to you as well. So I just want to say thank you to everyone for stepping up and reviewing this. Did anyone else have anything else to say?
I believe we got another item to do.
Okay, so, we are postponing our bylaws to the next regular meeting. Oxnard, I believe, are you postponing your bylaws to the next meeting, or are you approving them tonight?
We can approve.
My personal opinion is, if there is something that comes up in the discussion at the next meeting that we overhear at Oxnard, it might benefit us to tag along and postpone it. That's my personal thought.
I would agree, but I didn't want to weigh in too strong. Okay, so you will be postponing?
Yes.
Okay, Oxnard will be postponing on that one. So may I suggest the next item, which is the unfinished Business A, 6A, that that, too, was in alignment with the bylaws. Is Camrio, are you okay with postponing that to the next meeting? It's the election of the chair and vice chair of the calendar year.
Well, it seems like we're going to be a quarter of the way through the year, maybe six months is the way we're going before we get a new chairman.
If I'm not mistaken, maybe I'm sure there'll be a roll-off. I thought we voted and it was a done.
Okay, Oxnard voted. I know Camrio...
We're ready to go.
Okay.
That's awesome, I love that you guys are available. Camrio?
You're ready.
It just said both, so my apologies. Camrio, what is our decision with John as to what you want to do for voting? Because currently, as it is...
Well, I think we need to vote.
Is it, are any of the discussed changes in the bylaws, does it, will it have any material effect on the voting if we vote tonight? Probably not.
There was no changes that were objected to as far as the terms and the...
I'm just getting clarification.
County Council says no.
Okay, then we can elect, perfect. All right, great. So Camrio, we would like to select a chair and vice chair for the calendar year. Can I get a chair? Any suggestion for a chair?
I'll nominate, I don't know about suggesting.
Oh, sorry, there's a rotation, correct? I apologize.
Madam Chair, yes, there is a rotation that we typically follow. So Mr. Bill Thomas is the vice chair right now, so if your authority is fine, he will become the chair, and somebody from the city of Camrio will come up and be the vice chair.
Okay, so then we need a nomination for a vice chair.
So does he go up automatically, or does he still need to be nominated?
He needs a vote still.
Okay.
Okay, so you were correct, so I will nominate Bill Thomas.
Great, wonderful.
Chair.
For a chair.
Well, she asked for nominations for chair.
Yes, so can I get a, Mike, or Sean, would you like to second that?
I will second it.
All right, it's been first and second. Any first and second? Any further questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any noes or abstentions? Motion has been approved, you are now chair. Would you like to move to this spot, or?
I can do it from here.
Okay, do you want to take it away?
So in, for vice chair, do we have a nomination?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Sean Molche.
Aye. I'll second.
Any comments? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Any noes, abstentions, motions approved.
Thank you.
All right.
Number seven, Director's Report.
I think we have to do Oxnard's.
I'm sorry, I thought you said you already had voted.
They did it last time.
We didn't finalize it.
All right, I'm sorry.
No. So the rotation calls for Supervisors Zaragoza to be the chair, and somebody from the city as well to be the vice chair.
I nominate Bert. Bert. I'm the parola. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So Bert's vice.
Okay, but I believe you needed to be nominated as well, even though this is a rotation.
Say it again.
I believe you also needed to be nominated as the chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We nominated Zaragoza as chair and Bert as second, all in one vote.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Good job.
Are we okay, Leroy? Okay.
Okay, moving on, chair.
Yes.
So number seven, Director's Report.
Well, what I can, in the Director's Report, I wanted to, hopefully he's watching us right now, but if not, I'll be happy to meet him. The county CEO's office, Mike Powers, made an announcement yesterday that they've selected the new director of airports. Kip Turner is his name. He has experience from three airports. He's currently in Eagle County, Colorado. He is a certified member of the American Association of Airport Executives. The other thing that I can tell you is that I actually called him yesterday to congratulate him on the position, and he will be starting with us on April 8th. He is excited, his staff is waiting, we needed the leadership, and we're looking forward to working with him and to continue to, again, try to get him to be acclimated to the local airports and continue moving forward. So we're excited to have him. That's my Director's Report for tonight.
I just want to take a minute to say thank you very much. It has been a very long process, and a lot of things have changed, at least since I was chair, and I appreciate working with you and all of your staff and all the very difficult conversations and discussions, and appreciate your openness. There's been a lot of town halls, there's been a lot of one-on-ones and so forth, and I appreciate the professionalism, and I look forward to Kip coming in and joining us. We are very excited to have him come, and hopefully, we'll be able to have a time where all the public can meet him as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, real quickly, on behalf of Oxnard, it's on, it's on, it's going, it's on. Do you like it?
Right here.
Oh, jeez.
Right there.
It's going to go really loud. Right here. Here we go. Oh, no, I voted, thank you. All right. Okay, I'm going to make, oh, you can hear me now, right? On behalf of Oxnard, we just want to basically the same commendation. Jorge has had a tough road, and I think everybody will agree with that regardless of the circumstances or how he got there, and he has done a yeoman's job of hanging in there, being a professional, trying to take care of everything and everybody the whole time, and my hat's off to you, the whole side of this council. Thank you very, very much. All right.
His staff helped too, so thank you.
Thank you, Jorge, and thank you for a good job.
Sorry, I can't take you from not voting.
Thank you.
You're number one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to receive and file the rest of the Director's Report.
Very good.
I'll second.
You want to take a vote?
No, I was.
Yeah, I just have, I just have a quick question, thank you very much. You know, with the report on the monthly activity, this, you know, it seems trivial after the issues we've discussed, but it says that, you know, to date, you're to date that we're behind, Oxnard Airport is about down 10% from the previous year, and what would you attribute that to?
You know, it's something that I'm actually looking into. Right now, I'm working on the budget, and actually, that's something I should have mentioned during the Director's Report, which is going to be taking place on the 21st. And I'm trying to understand what was, what is going on. We see that there's about a 10% decrease at both airports. Probably the, my guess is probably the weather, the rain maybe, the season, but I'm not really sure what really contributed to it, but that's my guess.
Yeah, and I just, oh, I'm sorry.
The quarantine days as well, right?
Exactly.
Right. Yeah, and that obviously can affect Camarillo and Oxnard differently, I certainly understand that. The irony of it is, is that, and I won't mention the individual by name, but, you know, I have a member of the public that sends me on occasion maybe 30 videos a day of airplanes flying over his home. So that's every day, 30 videos. And if anyone here in the audience or any member of the commission would ever like to join me to watch those videos at any point, but in any event, it's, yeah, it's, yeah, bring the beer, bring the chips, anyway, but it seems if I were to, that's what I found a little bit ironic, because maybe, in fact, out of the flights in Oxnard, even given the reduction, that maybe the flight school, that there are more, there's more activity with the flight school, and that maybe could be the case. You know, I don't see how there could be a reduction, yet it seems in his mind it's unprecedented, and how many takeoffs, touchdowns, and how far they're swinging, and that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, I don't have an explanation for that, you know, I am familiar with the individual that you're talking about. I think that his life situation changed, and he now sees the aircraft overflying his house more than before.
And I see the aircraft flying over his house, too, on my iPhone.
Yes.
You connected to it.
All right.
All right.
So you had a motion?
So we have a motion, a second, to receive and file?
Yes.
All those in favor for Camarillo?
Aye. Aye.
Motion to receive and file? Yes. Yeah, first, second? Second. All in favor? Aye. Okay.
Correspondents, anything of note?
Unless you have any questions.
Nope. Any authority comments from either Oxnard or Camarillo?
And the authority comments, again, I just want to thank Rubio, you know, for all the good work you've done. I know we've had budgets, and one of the things that you did, I think, was really great, was the budget, and were really straightforward and helped us out, and working with the tenants, I think, is extremely important, you know, and we're hopefully going to welcome Mr. Turner when he comes in, and hopefully, maybe can stay, I'm sure, hopefully, as the deputy, you know, for the airport, you know, so.
Yeah, I'm still your deputy.
Good, good. That's right, because you were just the interim.
Yes.
But thank you again for a good job.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to the community. We've had a lot of outreach and received in our office, and appreciate the discussions that are being had. We might not always see eye to eye, but I just expressed to continue that. I think a good, open dialogue, and also with county council, has been very good amongst all of us to get to a better airport, a greater airport that we will all be proud of. So I just thank you for everyone for all the hard work. We have more to come, but just thank you.
And just before we adjourn, I do commend everyone for their professional and, I won't say gentle, but at least not acrimonious discussions tonight. I think that was a lot more worthwhile than rants and raves, so I appreciate it. With that note, I think we're adjourned.
We want to work with people.